And reconvening to open session, the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, December 9, 2019. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Mr. Rayzac?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Demme?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Ms. Donahue would lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice.
I know we have a few board salutes. I'm going to ask that we do those. At 7:05, we have to have a levy hearing, and we need to do that promptly, but I think we do have time to do the board salute. So, Ms. Demme.
Wabonzi Valley Health Education Program receives state recognition. The board salutes the Wabonzi Valley Health Education Program on receiving the Health Blue Ribbon Award at the Illinois Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance State Convention. This award is in recognition of the great curriculum and excellent instruction that is provided to Wabonzi Valley students. Congratulations to all involved.
Thank you. Mr. Carrubus?
The board salutes the Niqua Valley Girls Swimming and Diving Team for their back-to-back state championships. The Wildcats won by 14 points to defend their state title against New Trier. Congratulations to all the athletes and coaches. Well done.
Thank you. And Ms. Grover?
The board salutes Matia Valley Principal Darrell Eccles for being named High School Principal of the Year, and Wabonzi Valley Assistant Principal Charles Bibbs for being named High School Assistant Principal of the Year for the DuPage Region of the Illinois Principals Association. Both will advance for consideration of the state-level award in each of their respective categories. Congratulations to Darrell and Charles on the stellar achievement.
Thank you. It's 7:02. We're going to have three minutes of uncomfortable silence.
Do you want to get our student?
Yeah.
Get our student in? We'll probably do it.
You can do it? Okay, let's get our student.
Unless you've got a 10-minute statement for us.
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Quincy Stotler from Wabonzi Valley High School. Welcome, Quincy.
Welcome.
As a Warrior, I'm proud to report that our Wabonzi community continues to thrive and have provided many outstanding experiences to our students. In regard to clubs and activities, over the last month since you've received a report from Wabonzi, we had a very successful Veterans Day assembly and activities around it where we had over 180 veterans recognized in our community tribute wall. During that week, we highlighted the theme of decision to serve. This past weekend, our prison performances showcased some spirited music and involved over 600 musicians from all aspects of our music department. In our fall play, Mystery in the Air, was a strong experience for 46 students who were onstage. We also saw record-breaking attendance with two of our shows completely sold out. The Wabonzi Theater Department is always a point of pride for us. Our 67 clubs and activities have only just begun their competitive seasons, but something we're proud of is that with extra efforts on recruiting and matching up students to groups of their interests, the most recent count shows 56 percent of our students participating in clubs and activities. This number does not include athletics. Also to mention that Mr. Charles Bibbs, Assistant Principal for Student Services, was recognized by the Illinois Principals and Association as Assistant Principal of the Year for the DuPage Region. We're proud of his work and especially his strong connection with the students. In terms of athletics, the Wabonzi Valley Athletic Department saw 535 student athletes compete during the fall season, concluding with one student athlete making the trip to the IHSA State Swimming Finals on November 22nd and 23rd. Senior girl swimmer Lauren Lee qualified in both the 100 and 200 freestyle and finished 22nd in state in both events. Girls and boys cross-country both saw great success this past fall. The boys' cross-country team advanced to the state championship in Peoria for the first time in 12 years. At the state meet, the boys finished 13th in state as a team. The girls' cross-country team advanced to IHSA Sectionals as a team, and senior Ashley Heidenrich advances in individuals to the state meet and finished 11th in the state. State football ended their season on a two-game winning streak with victories over DVC rivals Matia Valley and Naperville North. Boys soccer also conclude their season on a strong note and advanced to the IHSA Regional Championship before their season came to an end. Girls volleyball finished the season with 28 victories and a DVC conference championship, a third-straight IHSA Regional Championship, and advanced to the IHSA sectional finals before their season came to an end. In total, our varsity teams at Wabonzi Valley has 28 DVC all-conference members and completed very strong throughout the fall season. Our winter season is off to a great start with our boys' varsity basketball team starting off their season 5-0 and winning the Batavia Invite over Thanksgiving break. Moving on to academics, we were recently notified that we have 119 Illinois State Scholars for this year, and we'll recognize those along with our Indian Prairie Scholars in February. This past Friday, we received the scores for the PSAT, and we'll be sending those to homes very soon. December always brings a busy time for course recommendations to begin preparation for next school year and the busy week of final exams to finish up the semester. The winter break is a much-appreciated time after such a busy season. That's all for the Wabonzi Valley Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors!
Thank you, Quincy.
Great job.
It is now time for our levy hearing. I have Matt Shipley here and also Jay Strang. Matt?
All right. Good evening, Board. Tonight, we are taking the final step in the process that will result in the extension of our property tax levy. The Illinois School Code gives the authority to Boards of Education to levy a tax on the real property within the district to support our public schools. This is an annual process that must occur before the end of December. Furthermore, the truth in taxation law provides that if the tentative levy exceeds 105 percent of the previous year's extension, a public notice and hearing are needed before the official levy can be adopted. Since our levy this year represents less than a 5 percent increase, we are not subject to the truth in taxation law for this year. However, we still intend to follow the intent of the law. Therefore, 20 days prior to the adoption of this levy resolution, the school board estimated and announced a tentative levy for the amount of money deemed necessary to be raised by property taxation. This tentative levy was approved by the Board of Education at the November 18, 2019, meeting. We are recommending the board approve a levy in the amount of $310,666,492. This includes the bond and interest levy. This levy is simply a request. While this represents a 4.1 percent increase over the 2018 extension, the district is subject to tax cap legislation. We will not receive this full 4.1 percent increase. Depending on the amount of new property, the district should experience an increase of approximately 3.68 percent in our final extension. It is important to note that this levy includes the bond and interest levy of $27,249,956. This estimated bond and interest levy is in accordance with our bonded debt restructuring program. Over the past 28 years, the property tax cap has faithfully limited property tax increases in the Coller Counties to the amount of the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, and it will continue to do so. The Consumer Price Index used for the tax cap this year is 1.9 percent. The district, therefore, will receive a 1.9 percent CPI increase plus any amount for new growth. With the tax cap, CPI has become the critical factor, not the tax rate. The rate is simply lowered or raised by the tax cap formula to obtain a CPI cap. Tax rates for this year will drop as property values has increased in both DuPage and Will Counties. DuPage's EAV has increased by 4.09 percent, and Will County's total EAV has increased by 3.35 percent. For 2019 taxes, the average homeowner should experience a 1.9 percent increase in taxes paid to District 204. This amount agrees to the Consumer Price Index. The levy is set at an amount that assures the district will be able to access property tax revenues from new property. Finally, this levy is based on our fiscal year 2021 forecast. Current projections for fiscal year 2021 suggest increased needs for capital improvements, some safety and security improvements, as well as the continued implementation of evidence-based funding components. The estimated increase in property tax proceeds for the district is approximately $10 million from the prior year. Of this, about 4.8 million will be from new property. Later in tonight's agenda, we will ask the Board of Education to approve the resolution which will adopt the 2019 tax levy.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? We have not received -- no one signed up for public comment. Wanted to make that known. With that, I need a motion then to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the levy hearing.
I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jackie call the roll, please.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comment for non-agenda items and agenda items. Once again, no one has signed up for today's meeting, so then we move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We always begin with the superintendent report. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, so it's that time of year when I need to share with you how our students and community have really stepped up to help others who are not so fortunate. Over the past several years, we've seen the need for supporting our homeless families increasing, and we're really fortunate to live in a community that's willing to answer our call for any kind of assistance. So, over the Thanksgiving holiday, we were able to provide support for meals for 52 families, and I want to give a huge thank you to Maison Sabica, Casey's Foods, and the IPEF Kids' Essential Fund for helping us provide either a sit-down meal, a hot meal to go, or groceries for our families in need. And as the holiday season approaches, we'd like to thank all those who've contributed to our Adopt a Family program to provide holiday assistance to 132 of our homeless families. And a very special thank you to Niqua Valley Student Council, who made a very generous contribution to the IPEF Kids' Essentials Fund. A huge shout-out to the Samaritan Network. They, along with their partners, Good Shepherd Church and Side-by-Side for Christ Ministries, made another significant contribution, very significant contribution, this year. We received additional support from Grace United Methodist Church, the DuPage Credit Union, Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, the Indian Prairie Parents Council, several PTAs, and individual families or organizations that provided support, as well as our own district staff. So, we're grateful for all the contributions we've received to help make the holiday season a little bit brighter for our families in need. And as we wind down, believe it or not, just this week and next week before the end of the semester, you know, we want to just wish everyone a great winter break and hope that people enjoy that time away with family and friends, and we'll be ready to welcome back our students in a new year. That's it.
Thank you. We now move to the approval of our consent agenda items. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items D through J as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through J as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie call the roll, please.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move to our action items. First, the approval of the 2019 tax levy resolution and the resolution adopting working cash fund tax. I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2019 tax levy resolution and the resolution adopting working cash fund tax as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion?
Ms. Wade in?
Hearing none. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Motion passes. Second action item is the approval of the 2020-2021 school calendar. I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 school calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Am I second?
There's a lot of seconds. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Hillman?
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Sullivan. In accordance with Board Palt C 620, tonight you are asked to approve the calendar for the 2020-21 school year. Prior to presenting you with the calendar for approval, the District 204 Calendar Committee, comprised of IPA members and central office administrators, met to discuss the best options, taking into consideration the guiding ideals and feedback from a variety of stakeholders. Once the committee has developed two options for consideration, the Board of Education provides feedback to the calendar committee, changes are made as necessary, and then the staff of District 204 surveyed on the calendar option that they would most prefer. The results are then used to make this recommendation. Based on the results of the survey, the administration is recommending that the Board of Education approve calendar option A. Overall, 52.6 percent of the staff that voted voted for option A. If approved by the Board, the first day for teachers would be August 17, and the first day for students would be August 20. The last scheduled day for students would be June 1, and for teachers, June 2. At this time, I would be happy to entertain any questions the Board may have, and then ask the Board to take action to determine the calendar for the 2021 school year.
Questions or comments?
Just a comment. Thank you for all the work. You guys have been at this for a while, and I know there was a lot of things to navigate this time around, so thanks, and I'm happy that we got this out in December like we usually do.
Not a problem.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you for the Columbus State Indigenous Peoples' Day.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Jackie call the roll.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yes.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Mr. Rayzac?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move to our discussion section. We begin with facilities update. Mr. DePaul?
Good evening, Board Member. Dr. Sullivan, thank you for this opportunity to provide you our facilities and capital improvement project update. As you may know, we're coming to you three to five months earlier than what we -- when we have presented this in the past. This is due to the great amount of projects that we need to get out to bid early before other work, either by school districts or industry, is there, is also out to bid, as this will help us get more competitive pricing. Tonight's presentation, we will review our deferred maintenance plan, the recap of our major fiscal year 1920 projects, and then we'll focus in on those projects we are proposing -- we're going to get done in 2020-21. And specifically, we'll talk about the Kraus Education Center, Still Masonry, the Matia Valley High School Solar Project, take a look at our roof expenses, where we are with elementary air conditioning, our energy management initiatives, along with our next steps. Back in September 2018, Mr. Strang and myself presented you a deferred maintenance plan. Following this plan, we would be able to eventually catch up with those projects that were delayed during the time we were cutting our school budgets, but it will also help us keep up with those current projects. On this slide, our goals for the deferred maintenance plan, which is to reduce deferred maintenance projects as fast as possible, focusing on our building envelope, our roofing, masonry, windows and doors, our heating and cooling, and safety projects. We want to ensure that quality of work is maintained throughout this process at a manageable pace. We also have to proactively maintain our existing projects. And available revenue sources for this come from our capital outlay account, developer contribution, sale of property, and the prior year fund balance. As we mentioned before, we're not only looking at our deferred maintenance projects, but we also have current projects that are defined either as special projects. These are projects that the district has prioritized. Examples are the elementary classroom air conditioning, modifications to classroom locks and school PA systems, and transforming Wheatland into Wheatland Academy. We also had scheduled projects. Examples are repair roof leaks, necessary repairs to our asphalt and concrete and flooring. Now, these aren't wide-scale replacement projects that's handled through our scheduled or deferred maintenance program, but these are replacing small amounts of floor tiles or concrete sections or asphalt that has potholes that have failed in our parking lots. Also, scheduled projects include equipment replacement, like, from a variety of areas, our grounds, security, HVAC, plumbing, and electrical. This slide talks about those projects that were completed during 19 and 20, and since we were focusing on actual costs, you have to remember that typically, our main construction season is June through August. While June is in one fiscal year, and July and August is in another fiscal year. These expenses are concluded at the time the last payment was made for a particular Looking at this chart, I broke out Wheatland, the cost for Wheatland Academy into three different parts, so you could see what the major expenditures were there. But really, that was one project. Again, we talked about that as being a special project, so out of the fiscal year 1920 completed projects, the nine were completed, three were characterized as special, four is deferred, and two as scheduled. We also had four projects that are continually ongoing. Two of those, the asphalt replacement and the Wabonzi gym floor bleacher replacement, are actually substantially complete, meaning that we're able to use them for their intended purpose, but we still have some punch list items that need to be completed, so we didn't close that out. Two other projects, the Fisher slope roof replacement and the 2019 masonry restoration, need to be completed in July and August of this year, so, again, they're in a different fiscal year, and again, not completed yet. We intended that, we anticipated that, and those projects are Phase 2, which will be completed this summer. A couple pictures here for the Wabonzi gym floor and bleacher replacement. Picture on the left shows the original 1975 wooden bleachers being removed. They were replaced with plastic seats, wider aisleways, and now meet all code requirements. And the picture on the right shows the crew preparing to line the new fieldhouse floor. The original floor was removed, as it was showing wear and tear. There's a new synthetic floor that was installed, and this is similar to the floor that was installed at Wheatland also, Wheatland Academy. Looking for fiscal year 2021 capital improvement projects, as you can see, we're very aggressive. Of the 17 projects listed here, three are special, the intercom system upgrades, the Matia Valley Solar Project, and the Phase 6 air conditioning project. Nine are deferred. That's a Wabonzi Valley High School building automation system upgrade, that's our temperature controls that runs our ventilation, heating, and cooling systems. The Still tugpointing or masonry restoration, the Still East Parking Lot replacement project, Phase 2 with the Fisher slope roof retrofit, the Fisher West Parking Lot replacement project, and masonry repair at Brooks, Brookdale, Coller Shaw, McCarty, and Springbrook. Also deferred is our slope roof replacement project at May Watts and a Brquette through-wall masonry project. That project needs to be completed before we can replace the roof at Brquette, which we're intending on doing in the next future year. Masonry through-wall has to be done first. We found especially large scope of work on this roof replacement project. Even on our smaller projects, it was better that we do the masonry one year and then come back and do the roofing. Scheduled projects on this list is a new entrance to the CEC parking lot and sidewalk to Still, the CEC exterior renovation project, the skull and flat roof replacement, the Brooks flat roof replacement, and those are not complete flat roof replacements, but only those areas that have been particularly leaky in the past years. Also is tennis court crack repair at Matia and Niqua. Those are our scheduled projects. As you can see, looking on this chart, we can't get all this work done just during the traditional June, July, August, and really, August is half, half a month of the school construction season. So, due to the scope of work, we're going to have to start some of these projects early before school ends, and some will continue while the school year starts next August and September. The blue bars show where classes and activities will go on during construction. Yellow bars show where no classes or activities can be scheduled. However, office staff will still be able to work in those buildings, as well as meet and greet parents as they come to register new students. Now, many of you remember when the district went through expansive growth period, we're working on building additions while school was in session was commonplace. And if you remember, between 1993 and 2004, we worked on 13 elementary additions. Two middle school freshman center additions occurred in 2002, 2003. Wabonzi went through three addition periods, or two addition periods, with two of the large additions occurring between '89 and '92, and the science addition in '94 and '95. We had the gym addition at Niqua in '98, '99, and actually, most recently, the Phase 2 work at Matia was completed in 2009, 2010. So, this was fairly commonplace for this work to occur while school was in session. As we look further on this, the district approving e-learning days is actually going to help our construction period.
That is the biggest fan of e-learning.
Yeah, e-learning. As you remember, we lost four days last year to weather, and that did impact our summer Looking at some specific projects, the next couple slides will highlight those. The CEC projects are numerous. The green and blue highlighted area is a new entrance to the CEC parking lot and the sidewalk to Still. Again, going back to the bar graph, this will start as soon as weather allows and be completed by June 1. We need to start the exterior renovations at the CEC in April. That's represented by the orange highlighting. We'll be starting that in April and continuing until August 15. That would mean that we will have to relocate the preschool summer school from June on. Work can continue with an early start. While school's in session, we will work with Mrs. Johnston and Mrs. Osborne to temporarily relocate students to avoid disruption during construction. Then the pink staff parking lot, that's a future project. Then the pink staff parking lot, that's a future project, and that will be scheduled for the summer of twenty twenty-one. That would not entail that we will have to move students over the summer school for the summer twenty-one due to the lower enrollment and the number of staff needed. We can have them park in other areas and still have the bus lanes open for drop-off and pickup. This is what the new exterior of the C E. C. would look like. Metal panels. This material will provide a forty-year life cycle instead of the current E F. S. or commonly known as Stucco, which has a twenty-year life cycle. So this sets us up better in the long run. Still Masonry. We're looking to start this project March thirtieth and continue while school's in session. We will start at the back bus entrance. This is the work in the orange that's highlighted, and will be done while school's in session. Start at the back bus entrance, work clockwise around the building, past the cafeteria, receiving area, gyms, and up through the locker rooms. The rest of the building will be completed from June first to August fifteenth. Again, we've been successful when we started masonry restoration, which is basically tuck pointing. It involves grinding out the initial or the existing mortar and filling it with new mortar and replacing any broken bricks and so forth. We did work like this at Niqua two summers ago, and again, in the non-academic areas, staying away from the academic areas without any real issues. The Matia Valley High School Solar Project, anticipated to start March thirtieth with completion no later than end of October. The important thing to note here, there is no cost to the district for this project. It's a power purchase agreement, which we'll go in a little bit later. The benefit is that the energy produced by the solar panels will be sold back to the district at a cost lower than what we would be paying the power company. And again, you entered into that agreement at a previous school board meeting. This slide here is a historical look at our roof expenses. Blue bars indicate what we are paying or what the cost of roof replacement has been. The orange bars indicate what we're paying for repairs of roof leaks. Again, this is a system where leaks are identified by our building staff, sent to contractor who responds and repairs the leak, and then we verify that the leak has been repaired, and we move forward. Earlier tonight, you approved a bid for a new leak response contractor. This will start in January first with a new vendor. Our past vendor has served us well for many years. Unfortunately, he was the second, they were the second low bid, but we are confident that we have a good vendor in place. The, we don't have, did not enter information for nineteen twenty, or nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty for the roof repairs because that work is still ongoing. We don't have a final number on that, and on June thirty. The slope roof repairs at Fisher last year, we didn't get as many roof areas completed due to weather and available manpower, so that reduced, the blue line for twenty nineteen, twenty roofing replacement was reduced from what we were projecting at our last facilities update report, but we are looking to spend one point nine million on roof replacements over the next fiscal year. So we're completing the work in June and carrying on into the fall. The green line is what was recommended by E M. G. in the facilities assessment report. They recommend that we should be spending anywhere around an average of one point eight million per year on roof replacements. Elementary air conditioning. We finished Phase Five last August. That included installation of air conditioning in five hundred and ninety classrooms. The remaining phase is to air condition the L M. C. and hallway areas rounded on the classrooms, the classroom wing, but not into the kindergarten wing that's perpendicular to the L M. C. This is, unfortunately, this phase will need two summers to complete. Okay? So we anticipate this starting in the summer of twenty twenty, where we will install rooftop units at all nineteen elementary schools. Then we have additional work to do in the ceilings of the L M. Cs, where we have to duct the new units and replace two air handlers that are currently serve these areas. That will begin in September twenty twenty on second shift work. Will entail closing individual L M. Cs for approximately a month. While doing this work, again, it will be on second shift, we will work with Mrs. Johnston and the elementary principals in determining which schools where this can occur, and we, this will enable us to work during the school year. Otherwise, it would take three summers or more in order to complete this phase. Again, project completion date is scheduled for August of twenty twenty-one. Our energy management initiatives, this is the second year we participate in the Enernoch Demand Response Incentive Program. Two-year total savings is one hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. This year, we anticipate receiving additional sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, this is only eligible for those schools that are in the ComEd territory. Basically, what happens if there's excessive demand on the electric grid, it's an optional program in which they will come to us and ask us to reduce our electric load. Now, the only way we can do that is turn off our air conditioning in our, in our large schools where we have the central air conditioning option. So it really impacts five schools. So far, during the two years we've been involved in it, there has not been a critical day requested, and prior to entering this program, we checked around with other schools, and they told us for the last five years or more of their involvement, there has not been a critical day. However, in order to qualify for the incentive, we have to do a one-hour audit where we have to reduce our electric load, and again, that means shutting off the electric to Fisher, or shutting off air conditioning at Fisher, Grainger, Still, Matia, and Wobonce. Again, the audit period has been at a time when students are not in session. This year, it was just before one of our institute days, so we were able to demonstrate that we could reduce our demand and thus qualify for these additional dollars. We continue to transition our outside lighting to L E. Ds when the fixtures are burned out, either the metal high light or high-pressure sodium. We're currently testing some L E. D. indoor lighting in some of our conference rooms, with good response.
Tonight.
Yeah, good. And as I mentioned earlier, the board accepted a proposal from W. C. P. Solar for installation of solar panels at Matia Valley High School. Now, this is through a power purchase agreement. This is only available to those schools in the ComEd territory. Naperville Electric does not have a power purchase option. They will gladly allow solar panels, but it's at the owner's expense to install and maintain, and this expense is just too cost prohibitive for the school district to undertake. As I mentioned before, the power purchase agreement, the company that we have it with, W. C. P. Solar, is responsible for the cost for installing and maintaining the panels for a twenty-five-year period of time. At the end of that twenty-five years, the district has an option of buying the system for a dollar or having them remove it. And again, the cost is showing us the solar power is at a, is a reduced cost from what we would be getting it from ComEd. As you are aware, funding is not unlimited. So every time a capital improvement project is proposed or we have district needs, we allocate monies based on the following hierarchy: safety-related items, approved curriculum-related needs, necessary repairs, building code changes as part of our life safety code, and aesthetics. We also are exploring grant and other cost savings opportunities. And just today, Illinois State Board of Education announced a dollar-for-dollar matching grant up to fifty thousand dollars for school maintenance projects. Eligible participants or school districts, cooperative high schools, vocational centers, and special ed co-ops, the state indicates they have approximately forty-four million available at no more than fifty thousand dollars. I think that equates to eight hundred and eighty applicants or awards at the full dollar figure. So we should be able to receive one of those grants, and we will be applying for it. The grant period ends February fourteenth of twenty twenty. So that's a quick look at our facilities and our plans. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, comments? Mr. Rising? Yeah, I got a couple. So, you know, you said typically, obviously, it's that June to August timeframe where we're doing a lot of this stuff. Because we deferred so much, now, looking back in hindsight, do you think, you know, I like that we're starting to do more during the year, as long as we can take precautions that it's not in the areas where students are. Do you think that prevented us from doing any maintenance in the past, or not really because we were able to work it in that June to August timeframe?
I think we were able to work in that June, August timeframe. Basically, the issue was we now have to do, in order to catch up, we now have to do maybe two or three roofing projects a year instead of one.
Right.
One or so. The issue is to manpower availability, you know, during those months.
I was thinking of that, the vendors, yeah, they're all going to be busy at that same time.
You're competing against every other school, the school district and the state that doesn't start either early or in late.
Right.
And that impacts on cost and pricing.
So just for knowledge, from a thirty-thousand-foot view, I know you know our buildings like the back of your hand, but, you know, if something happened in, like, say, an elementary school, where they identified a situation, a problem, that you may not be aware of, is usually the principal bring that to your attention, and then you put it on your ranking of, okay, where does that fit in the timeframe of availability and that type of thing? Is that kind of how it works from a thirty-thousand-foot view?
Yeah, it either comes to the building principal, or hopefully, if, obviously, if it's a repair, it comes from our building operations staff, our custodians, our maintenance men, and so forth. You know, over the years, there have been surprise projects. A boiler leaking at, you know, McCarty or Brookdale comes to mind, and we had to bid those projects out and push back some other items that we may have been planning for. The Fisher Wall Project a couple of years ago certainly was a surprise, where we had some settling floor slab that we had to take care of.
Yeah. And then just last question, a little more specific, the air conditioning at the elementary schools, the L M. C. work that we're going to be doing. You had mentioned something about the kindergarten wing or hallway, what?
Basically, it's, if you're familiar with our elementary layouts, there's either full or private.
Usually, the classrooms, all those other classrooms funnel into the L M. C., but that one is kind of behind.
One far hallway, if you say, if you imagine at the end of the school.
Yeah.
That's perpendicular to the L M. C. access.
Right.
That will be a non-air-conditioned hallway.
Okay.
So the immediate hallways that are adjacent to the classrooms around the L M. C. will be air-conditioned.
You don't think that will impact the L M. C. area, do you?
Well, during the time we have to install the ducting and so forth, those areas that we're working with on second shift during the school year, that those L M. Cs will have to be shut down for about a month.
Then just to refresh my memory, do we do the art and music rooms, or no?
Yes.
We did, okay.
Yes, that's included in the five hundred and ninety.
Okay.
Art and music.
That's all I have, thanks.
Ms. Donahue?
So I asked you last week about the roofing expenses, and you commented that the outlook looks like it's going to significantly increase, but you also commented that you were concerned about the ability to get the work done even if we had the money. So I wanted you to clarify, like, what is the concern, and do we need more companies to start roofing businesses?
We, you certainly want to make sure that your companies that are doing the work, that they are qualified and that they are trained in the processes that you're putting down. We're looking at that one year of substantial monies. We feel that if we can balance the amount of projects for slope roof replacement versus, and flat roof, that we will have an adequate workforce available. You know, this past year, we did Fisher and Graham, but they were both slope roof replacement projects. Really, we finished Graham Flat Roof the year before, so I think if we look at balancing the amount of flat roof repairs and slope roof repairs, that will be attracting a bigger pool of contractors because not all the slope roof contractors do flat roof repairs and vice versa. So I think if we balance that a little bit more and also have earlier starts and later ending periods, that we should have enough.
So would you bid those separately, then? You'd bid flat roof versus slope?
Yes, they are completely, even this year, as we're going out with the flat roof for Skellon and Brooks. That's a separate package, and then we will be coming, following up about two weeks later with the slope roof at May Watts. The key is to get out early before other districts, and, you know, then you have to balance what the commercial side is doing also.
Other questions?
Yeah, I've got some. So I would like to see some data for future board meetings during this presentation. I'd like to hear your comments on that, obviously, subject to the standing rule from Kathy Peel on its impact on administration. But looking at Slide twelve, we talk, we look at the roofing expenses. So there's a lot of other ways to slice the deferred maintenance. Masonry, asphalt, H V. A. C. and general projects are the ones that came to mind for me. So you mentioned the ones, the projects, but I like how this shows the dollar amounts over time and in relation to E M. G., and we might see some of this in the other plan, but I think it's nice to see in the facilities update where we are with the H V. A. C. and where we're at over time and where our consultant says we should be. So we can see the gap between, and the deficiencies, and, in this case, the fact that we're catching up with it. So I'd like, I'd like to see that data at future board meetings, and since it's just one board member's request, I'd like to hear your opinion and if there's consensus to do the work.
Yeah, so we can certainly break that information out for you and get that to you, even as an addendum to this report, if you'd like. even as an addendum to this report if you'd like.
Is there consensus?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I'd like to see a project or like how we're completing things.
Yes.
Update.
And the second data point that I would like to see is the spending breakdown per school. So, in the consultant report that we got from EMG, they were listing out all of the schools and over the years. And so, the facilities update shows that we're doing a project at this school and one at this school. But it would be nice to see, and if it's not information overload, that we're spending X amount of dollars at Wobanzie. And Wobanzie is an older high school and it has a greater deficiency. So, it's okay for us to be spending, we need to be spending more there. So, I'd like to see that as a, as a data point as well, depending on your opinion and consensus from the board.
Sure, we, we can provide that. Just to clarify, is that just the capital improvement expenses? Or would you also want to have the individual repairs by?
I think the deferred maintenance is more important to me as a, as a first blush on it. I think, I think that's the, the one we should be worrying about initially.
Sure.
Justin, are you asking for us to see also where, where we are versus where we should be?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, great.
Yeah. You know, when we did the Engage 204, our community told us that they wanted us to catch up on deferred maintenance. And so, I, I think as a whole or as a larger, as a district view, I think that's important that we share that with them. As far as school by school, yeah, I'd like to have an update as a board. I'm not sure necessarily, because we got that huge EMG report, I think it's good that we keep track of that by building. But, you know, I think that our community is more interested in the, the district as a whole.
Todd, we, we still have a big hole that we're in, right? How much deferred maintenance do we still have? Just to give people perspective on how much, I think you answered that question.
So, it looks like from the email that last year, we spent $6 million-ish.
On, on total maintenance.
Deferred and ongoing.
Yes.
And doesn't include special capital improvement projects.
That's correct.
So, and EMG says we should be spending about 8.4.
Correct.
So, yes, there's a big hole. That's on a yearly basis. So, I think, I mean, I don't want to go information overload, but I, you know, if the older schools are predominantly, have more need for deferred maintenance, want to make sure we're spending that on the older schools as well, wherever the need is. Not too much of a burden?
No, we, we can put that together. I, I appreciate the, the interest and the comments. And we certainly didn't want to overload you with too much information, but I think it's valuable information to have.
That's all I got, thanks.
Others? Yes, Mr. Grovan?
You had mentioned about grants, considering we are a Tier 2 district. Would the money come from somewhere else on the evidence-based funding? Where, where's, okay, so it's not part of?
Yeah, it's not part of evidence-based funding at all.
No.
But it's only $50,000.
Right.
Right. $44 million was allocated for this maintenance grant program for the state.
And do you think we would get it if we applied? Because I, I remember in previous board conversations, the state owes us back money for something else that we had applied for. So, what is your thoughts on that?
It's going to be awarded based on priorities, from what I understand. It was just opened today. Again, based on the amount of monies they say is available. If everybody received $50,000 and that's a matching dollar-for-dollar program, there would be 880 awards. So, I think we have a real good chance of, of getting that.
Thank you.
Others?
Just two quick questions. Slide 5, you had shared that the projects there, they were going to go, I think you said they were going to go into 2021?
Well, the, the, the two of them.
Two of them were going to go in 2021.
Yes, the Fisher slope roof replacement and the masonry restoration.
So, that projected cost there, is that for 1920, is that the total?
No, that's for the total project.
Okay. And so, okay, so that expenditure will be this year and, but the rest of the work will be, okay.
Yes.
I just had that quick question. And then on 7, just help me, and you may have shared it. Are, where we have no summer school, are those usually places where we do have summer school? And we just, we're not going to be able to do it this summer for the work to be done? Are they not usually scheduled, is summer school not usually scheduled at those locations?
The two main impacts are the Kraus Education Center and Still. Because they have been places, locations for the ESY program. Fisher, Brooks, May Watts, and of course, the LMCs, the 19, in the 19 un-air-conditioned elementary schools. They have had summer libraries and some, some other programs from time to time, either through Kathy Pease's department or, or so forth. So, we share this information with Cabinet and that they are coming up with plans to relocate these in, in other buildings.
Okay, that's exactly what I was going to ask. Thank you.
Ms. Beal, any questions?
No, I'm good.
Mr. DePaul, thank you. Mr. String, thank you. Over time, we've been able to address some of these concerns. We hope that the evidence-based funding continues because that's what has allowed us to address some of these deferred maintenance projects. I, I concur with Mr. Rising. Clearly, our building maintenance is one of our community's concerns and we need to be as transparent as possible. So, thanks for all the work you do.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion Superintendent update. We continue to work with our search firm, Ray and Associates, to screen our candidates. I think we're still on target to hopefully name a superintendent in January. Legislative advocacy update. I, I don't have anything, but I know Mr. Rising does based on the IASB convention.
Well, I just thought, you know, since that happened November 23rd, that we haven't been back in public, for public meeting. I did print, get you guys all something, the, the report from the resolution for the delegate assembly, I should say. Just for our community, there were two issues that were, seemed to be heavily discussed. One was the allowing certain staff member to be able to carry guns in schools. That was resolution number one. That did fail. The yes votes were 198 and the no votes were 249. Resolution number three to allow, if you recall, off-duty law enforcement officers, officers who retire within previous five years, as long as they include the same SRO training. I know we did not like that "may include" language. That resolution did pass. 289 to 126 it passed, so overwhelmingly. And then, you know, they give the updates on the other ones. You know, the only other one that we discussed, well, there was a couple of them, that police force of the one school district, that passed. And then the other one was the seating of the new members in an uncontested race, which we did not like as a board. That ended up passing as well. So, otherwise, this kind of just gives you a synopsis of what else took place. But if you have any other questions, just let me know. I just wanted to give you an update.
Okay.
Can I add something legislatively?
Yes.
Just that based on some of our advocacy about wanting to be able to use e-learning for buildings that are polling places, Representative Mayfield has filed a bill, House Bill 3977, which would give us the full interpretation that we could use e-learning for any of our schools that have been deemed polling places. So, we'll be, when this comes up, we will be advocating for that passage, so.
And Board of Education update. Bear with me, I have a few shout-outs. First, I want to shout out my fellow board members for their participation in the IASB convention. Not only did we participate in the convention and improve our learning, we also presented. The presentation went very well. I think it was well-received. And when I come back from that convention, I always feel good about how our board's functioning. In the scheme of school boards, I think we do okay. Dr. Sullivan talked about the adoptive family. On behalf of the board, I want to thank the community and everyone who participates in that. It's important that we help all our families. I want to give a particular shout-out because of the superintendent's search update. Superintendent's search, I've been spending a lot of time trying to plan different events and activities. So, I see a lot of central office people here. I've not seen anybody so excited from the central office as Lisa Schwartzberry, Jeannie Deena, and Catherine Bowman. Every time a donation comes in here, there's been a few times I've been working with Ms. Horvath, who really needs a lot of shout-outs, but we'll do that after the superintendent's search. But they come running in the office to see Dr. Sullivan and just showing excitement for what they're doing. So, I really appreciate that kind of passion when you see that and especially when we're trying to serve our community as a whole. I need to give a shout-out to Doug Akaryas, Harry Beth Carey, Candy Michele, and Jennifer Rowe. They had their first open house for student teachers. And it was well, well, well-received. I received many notes of appreciation, especially from the principals, who said this was a well-run, well-oiled machine and we hope. Because one of the issues that we do have is to attract high-quality teachers. And they thought that that was a great effort in terms of attracting teachers to our district and maintaining them. And I thought that was creative when I heard about this initiative. But it ended up being like, I get words like, wow, is this something? So, thank you to all of them. Finally, I want to thank our high schools for our winter concerts. They put me into some level of reflection. And the adoptive family kind of does too. So, the winter concerts are a time when all the community gets together. It's a community of students and it's a community of teachers. But then you have parents, grandparents, community members participating in those concerts. Dr. Sullivan calls it a gift to the community, and it is a true gift. But it just shows when the community works together, what can happen. Same thing with adoptive family. The other thing that it does, and I, I really reflected, you know, when you go to those three concerts, they begin the concert and they tell you to be quiet. And there's something like really special, like we don't do that anymore. 90 minutes, you had to turn off your phone. And you had to listen for 90 minutes. That's a skill that we don't have too much, and I don't have it. I don't know about the rest of you. So, and just listen and appreciate. And that 90 minutes at the end of it, I had some level of peace because I participated in that 90 minutes of quiet. So, I'm turning this to, on behalf of the board, I want to wish all our staff, all our students, in fact, our community, safe winter break. You guys work really hard and the board appreciates all that hard work in terms of working as a community to serve our kids. I ask that you spend some time with whatever community you have, whether that's family, whether that's extended family, maybe it's a prayer family, and that you just spend some time with family. But I also ask that you spend some time with yourself and, and be quiet. Again, maybe 90 minutes is too much, but find some quiet time and find some peace with your family because it's really necessary. And so, have a great winter break. With that.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All in favor?